I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this board meeting on five twenty-fourth quarter and could we keep hold please?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lindfieh. Missy Hermes. Present. Steven Bigasov.
Here.
We have a quorum. Yep. And can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
In a second. Oh, second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved. So we'll move on to resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to the Fergus Falls Walmart one six nine six for awarding the local community grant to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Also thank you to Lisa D for the donation of a trombone to the KSS Band Department. Someone offer that resolution and report its adoption?
So moved.
In a second?
One second.
See where you go. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Missy Hermes. Yes. Steven Bigasov.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to our reports then and we'll start with our elementary, one of our elementary principals, Cole Beck.
Good evening. On November eighth, um, we were treated to, uh, the Chamber High School Orchestra. Uh, they toured the elementary schools in Fergus. They started their day at Cleveland, uh, performed for the Cleveland students and headed over to OLV. And then, uh, in the afternoon, gave a performance at Adams School, finished up their day at McKinley. I happened to be at McKinley that day and heard their, um, heard their performance. So that was a really impressive, uh, group of kids in the high school chamber orchestra. Uh, just kind of looking at them, remembering many of them from, I guess, second grade. Um, but, uh, you know, those kids, those kids in the chamber orchestra are also, I think some of probably are, are top students academically, um, in our school. So it's just really, really fun to see that group. Uh, we always like to have some fun. We asked the kids in the chamber orchestra if any of them had a teacher that was out in the crowd. And so a few of them, a few of them went and stood by either their kindergarten teacher or, um, some of them had their kindergarten teachers in preschool and some of our kindergarten teachers were preschool teachers. So, um, I'd just like to thank Mr., uh, Mr. Craig Peterson. Um, for some reason I introduced him as Mr. Craig Anderson at the McKinley, uh, uh, performance. And then we kind of joked about that and laughed about that. So, but Mr. Peterson does a nice job with his high school orchestra. A little bit about parent teacher conferences, uh, those were at the end of October. Um, we had ninety-five percent, um, of our first graders at Adams School had a parent attend conferences. Ninety-six percent of our second graders at Adams School had parents attend conferences. And then at McKinley, I didn't break it down between, uh, our three first grade classrooms and the nine kindergarten classrooms, but we had close to ninety-seven percent attendance at parent teacher conferences at McKinley. Uh, the week of November thirteenth, so the last time I was here, I think it was October, it was October twenty-third. Um, I think I brought some, some, um, some artists, uh, what, what am I trying to say? I brought you some pieces of art from first and second graders at Adams School, uh, that, that were done with, uh, guest artist Sarah Ronovic. She had not yet been to our kindergarten classroom. So over the week of November thirteenth, she visited the nine kindergarten classrooms. And if I'm not mistaken, I think I saw hanging in the hallway outside of a classroom, um, portraits of McKinley School. So I believe, um, she also had our kindergarteners draw and paint the school that they attend. Um, first quarter attendance, so I visited seventeen classrooms. I visited all nine first grade classrooms and the eight second grade classrooms. And we talked about attendance, the importance of attendance, and we passed out charms that said attendance on them. And, uh, students who received a charm, um, had two or fewer absences during the first quarter of school. So forty-one days in the first quarter, if students could be there thirty-nine out of forty-one days, they had ninety-five percent or better attendance. So I used that, uh, opportunity to talk with kids about the importance of coming to school, why we want to come to school every day. We talked about growing our brain and the more that we can be in school, the more our brain can grow. Um, we tell the kids that didn't get a charm, uh, don't worry, uh, there are four quarters in the school year. Um, in fact, we talk about quarters and, uh, one-fourth and three-fourths of the school year remaining. So the kids that didn't receive an attendance charm know that they can, uh, receive three more. Uh, it's just something that we started to do some years ago. Uh, we went away from it when, when COVID came around and now we're kind of starting up with it. It's always been a first and second grade thing. Um, I'm not sure if our, I'm not sure if our kindergarteners would understand why, why, why are some kids getting that and I'm not and I want one of those. Um, so it's just something they do in first grade. Um, on November sixteenth at McKinley School, we celebrated the fiftieth day of school. We had a lot of fun. Um, boy, can our staff dress up. Uh, they all dressed like it was the fifties. They looked, they hit great. Um, I think we had a guest musician. I think he was introduced as, uh, Tall Man T or Mr. Tall Man T. Uh, that would have been Jesse Thorsett. He played some fifties music and, uh, we did, we had some fun in the gymnasium that day. Um, a couple more things just to, uh, let you know about. We finished up COGAT testing at Adams School the week of November sixth through the tenth. That's something that all second grade students take and we use the results of that to help identify students who may benefit from our talent development program, uh, when they get to third grade. Uh, recently we celebrated American Education Week. One of the things we did at Adams School is we had a food drive and that benefited, benefited the Salvation Army Food Pantry. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that I think it was on October thirtieth, we received an email, uh, of the staff at McKinley and Adams, probably Cleveland as well, from Officer Kittsman. He's starting to collect names. He's asking staff members to, uh, maybe give him and share with him some names of some kids that could benefit from what's called shop with a hero, uh, something that our local, uh, police department and, and possibly some other, uh, departments in, in our community, uh, participate in. So, um, it's always a good thing and, uh, I, I know I've talked, I've talked about our, um, school resource officers in the past and they continue to do a great job and find ways to, uh, help our kids, uh, in our schools. That's, that's my report for tonight. With that, I could entertain any questions.
Any question for Mr. Cole Beck? Okay. All right, then we'll move to our next report, which is our, our other elementary principal, Tiki Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I too want to share, uh, just report out on our quarter one attendance, um, percentage at Cleveland. Um, Cleveland achieved ninety-five percent positive attendance for first quarter. Um, and while we are pleased with that overall building, um, um, I guess target that we surpassed our district goal, um, we're still communicating with several families, um, to make sure that they really understand the importance of attendance and that when your child is missing school for whatever the reason is, um, they're missing out. They're missing out on instruction and those learning opportunities, um, and it's really hard to fall behind. And then, um, all the extra work that goes into catching up. So we're having a lot of those important conversations with the parents of, um, our third and fourth graders. And then conference attendance, uh, we had the great fortune of meeting with ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of the families. Um, there were nine teachers that were able to meet with every single one of the, their students' families. And then the others were, were unable to connect with either just one or two families. So it's just really fantastic that parents will, um, come to school, make the effort to schedule a conference and then come in and have some valuable, um, discussion, uh, with the, with the teachers. Um, our interventionists were in their, um, classrooms that evening too, and they also reported. They were able to meet with about half of the families that, um, of the, half the parents of the students that they serve. So, um, that's really great. It's great to have those, the involvement of those, those parents. This last Monday, um, Cleveland kicked off the annual service project that benefit, benefits the Otter Tail County Humane Society. Uh, we call it Presents for Pets and also have a pet parade that, um, kids are able to share a picture of them with their pets that just continuously scrolls when they have some sit time, um, to enjoy that. Ms. Jaclyn from the center comes to Cleveland and brings a couple furry friends with her and then just really shares out, um, the needs of the center and how students can be involved and, um, bring donations, um, such as old bath towels or worn out rugs, um, good different cleaning supplies. Um, so kids have been, kids are excited about this because they're excited about their, their own pets at home and it's something that they, um, already have responsibility, um, for caring about, so they, they get it. And, um, this is one way that they can contribute to our society, our, our community. Um, the special person who first coordinated, coordinated this project is Carolyn Stefan. And Carolyn was a parent educator at Cleveland for twenty-four years before retiring. And just this past July, she passed away. So, um, this, this special project is a great way to just, uh, remember her legacy and, and something that we plan to carry on. So, pretty special. Um, there are several events coming up in the next few weeks between now and, um, the end of December. Um, one of those is that our fourth grade classes, our, several of the fourth grade classrooms are working on fictional narratives right now during their language arts time. And they will be, um, hosting an event for their parents. And parents come in and, um, get into smaller groups and it's the opportunity for those, those students to share their fictional narratives that they've written and illustrated with their parents. Um, so this is one of our project-based learning opportunities that, um, that takes place in fourth grade. Third grade students, um, we'll be inviting a family member or a special guest to join them for the annual gingerbread house making. Um, it's a, it's a busy lunchroom with lots of frosting and graham crackers and decorations that, um, Christmas music playing and they have a, a great time, um, one afternoon, uh, that last week in December. Um, and it takes place right at the end of the school day so that, uh, the students have a little extra help getting those masterpieces home intact with them. So, um, they look forward to that. And then Thursday, December twenty-first, the fourth grade orchestra students will be performing their first concert. Um, this is for their families and the rest of the student body at Cleveland. Uh, we strategically set up the gym, um, so that the orchestra fits on one end of the gym and we haul some chairs over and set up rows for, for, um, the family members to sit on. So they have, um, a small number of songs that they showcase for us that day and just some of the different techniques that they're learning in their small group lessons. But, um, it is always remarkable how much they learn in, I think it's ten, ten weeks from their first large group, um, rehearsal experience to that present time. So this is their first ever concert, so needless to say they're always nervous and excited and all of that at the same time. So, so good things are happening at Cleveland. And with that, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, then our next report is from our middle school principal, Eamon Hurst.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'll, I'll, um, start with first quarter attendance as well. Um, we, uh, we did it by, we have two separate schools in the middle school. We have the fifth, sixth school and the seventh, eighth school, and that's just how it is. So that's how I, um, that's how I'm reporting it tonight. Um, the percentages include absences for parent excused, excessive excused, and unexcused absences. We didn't include tardies or OSS. We didn't include, uh, those would be the two big ones, tardies and medical. We did not include if we had a medical note. And we can do that in the future if you'd like, but fifth and sixth grade, um, ninety-six point one percent. And seventh and eighth grade was ninety-five point two percent. Seems pretty good. Yeah, pretty strong. So, um, uh, we started doing the honor roll at Fergus Falls Middle School a few years ago. And, um, so that's always kind of an interesting gauge of, of, uh, how our students are doing. Uh, we have about seven hundred and fifty-five students in the middle school currently and five hundred and forty-four of those were on the A or B honor roll. So Melanie, you already figured that out, but that's about seventy-two percent.
Under missed.
Seventy-two percent. So pretty high number of our, you know, three-quarters of our students are, are doing three, you know, B or better work. So, um, that, that's great. Um, our fall parent teacher conferences, um, uh, pretty typical of the percentages that we've had the last couple of years. Uh, that stands in line with what we've seen, uh, recently, but fifth grade was at ninety-five, sixth grade eighty-eight, seventh grade eighty, and then eighth grade sixty-five. So, um, you can see that regression from, yeah, that's pretty normal from what we've seen in the past. Um, but overall, pretty good participation. Um, we had our, we had a middle school Veterans Day program and I thought that was worth noting because we had a, a number of people that were really helpful in that, making that program happen. So thank yous to Mr. Cumrow and Ms. Trosvik for the wonderful music. They did real, really a nice job with their musical pieces. Um, uh, uh, Mr. Paul Anderson helped, uh, work with our fifth graders on the Pledge of Allegiance. So when they had their turn, he had been, uh, working with them for a few different, uh, recesses. Um, Ms. Dish and Ms. Anarud are also helpful from the seventh and eighth grade social studies department. And it was just really a really nice program, about thirty-eight minutes. I thought that was a good amount of time for a middle school program. So it was, it was really nice. If, I thought our speaker was really, uh, great too. We had Andrew White, um, whose wife and wife works here and children go to school in the middle school. So it was really nice. Um, we had our Patriot, Patriots pen winners were announced at the Veterans Day program. Uh, Malia Johnson was our first place winner, second place was Jenna Erickson, and third place was Sophia Nazri. Yeah. Um, we have our, uh, concerts, winter concerts that are happening. We have band already last Tuesday, orchestras tomorrow night, middle school orchestra tomorrow night. And then we have our sixth and seventh grade, uh, sorry, fifth and sixth grade choir December thirteenth. That's during the school day at noon. And then the seventh and eighth choirs Monday, December eighteenth. Um, uh, over the last couple of years, um, it's been going on longer than I've been here, uh, but Community Ed, Mary Mattson, has been working with our fax elective that Ms. Heichek teaches. And they are spending time, uh, filling bags for the back back program over the holiday season. So a really nice service project for those students. Um, Ms. Heichek only does it with her seventh graders, so you kind of get one shot. And it's not all either. It's just part of their elective class that's opposite, um, music students. But that's, that's plenty of kids to keep busy as well. So it really works really nice. So a nice service project for that. Thank you to Mary and, uh, Mary Mattson and then Ms. Heichek for handling and giving them the opportunity for that. And then, you know, as we sit and write these every month, you're like, well, what the heck have we been doing? We must have been doing something. Um, and, um, and what came to mind right away was the planning that we're doing for twenty-four, twenty-five. And, and that's already happening. We've, we've had principal meetings. We've had, uh, talent development meetings. Um, we, we've already had a number of conversations about, um, really a lot of thinking because, yeah, this is going to be a little different. So it takes some time to think through all the different scenarios, um, especially with FTEs. We've really started most of our thinking with, uh, things that affect our K-12 FTEs, um, which would be FIED, music, and then our RTI program. So I thought that was worth noting as well. It seems odd to say that you were doing that in the middle of November, but probably really needs to happen as well. A lot of things coming on, um, as we add another building to the district. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hurst? Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we will move on to our high school principal, Mark Anderson.
Good evening. Um, student council at the high school had their food drive and were able to, uh, drop off their food last, uh, Wednesday before Halloween, Thanksgiving, uh, to the food, uh, the, the food shelf. Uh, we had a ton of food lined up out here. They had class wars and, uh, the winning teams, the three of them will get to watch a movie on the last day before winter break. So the kids are pretty excited about that, freaking out because it's a different trimester, different teachers, but the teachers were okay with it. Um, high school students have also been completing their project-based, um, PBLs. Uh, so some of the classrooms I've been in here are the topics that they've talked about. Snow days, e-learning, greenhouse, community garden, weighted grades, public transportation, lack of high, uh, Fergus Falls Public School personnel, i.e. teachers, uh, updates, et cetera, KSS, authority in school, senior mandatory credits, and activity field. So there's a gamut of everything they're talking about and there's more tomorrow and Wednesday that we've been invited to. So it's always interesting to have kids talk about, uh, things that they'd like to see changed or happen within the school. Uh, last, a couple of weeks ago, we had the Duck Cup Memorial Fund, uh, present to our community and to our ninth through twelfth graders here at Fergus Falls High School. It's a mental health and suicide awareness prevention program. Uh, we had, uh, a lot of, we had thirty community members come in the night, the first night. Our HOSA group is a group of eight girls who are, um, going into the medical field and they kind of drove the bus on us having this presentation. One girl specifically, uh, communicated with them and offered this as an opportunity for us. The girls raised over two thousand dollars and most of that will go to the Duck Cup Memorial Fund to help pay for programming like this moving forward. They won't take, uh, money from us. It has to be a donation. So we raised money, uh, by getting donations from businesses and from, uh, selling of our t-shirts. Uh, registration seems like a long ways away, but we'll begin in the next week or two. Kids will start going through the old registration book with a list of the new courses that we'll talk about tonight and start thinking about what they want to take, uh, moving into next year and answering some questions for us, which I know they're really thrilled to do. Uh, but it offers them the opportunity to find out what we have, what they should be taking and what areas of interest they have at the high school as they go through. Um, our activity attendance update. So we have a policy that I would say it probably hasn't been followed very well for a while and we have implemented it. Uh, we got to test run it with, uh, three groups that were ending their seasons, um, and have implemented for the winter. It is working very well. I know that a few people have, uh, emailed myself from Mr. Abrahams, but overall, um, it has been, been, it's been very helpful. If you're not in school all day, you're not able to participate unless you have, uh, medical appointment. They have administrative, um, emergencies. They communicate with us or they communicate with coaches with support from us having that conversation. Uh, it's worked well. I think our attendance has improved dramatically since just that. Um, it's not just sports, so it's any, anything they sign up for that we run as an activity. Uh, students in Otter Time, um, also have been delivering positive messages to staff members in the building. Um, gratitude notes, uh, thank you for what you do in the building and things like that. Um, and last week, we did have captive voices come. They're a group that's doing a video for us for fifteen minutes. They interviewed thirteen kids for forty-five minutes each. So they got a lot of information, um, on things they'd like to see added, changed, or updated here at Fergus Falls High School. And we'll be sharing that with our staff and I can let you see that video also once we get to that point. DLC also attended the Duck Cup Memorial. They also attended our Veterans Day presentation. And they had a Native American singer-songwriter the week of November tenth. Um, Solen Johnson helped support with that process and had that person attend over at DLC. They had their annual pie making contest. I was not able to go last week. I was doing a cookie bake-off against, uh, the Four Foods classes here at the high school. So Mr. Toki said the pies were all good. So, um, they had a, uh, good, I think it was like eight to ten different pies they got to try. So, uh, a great opportunity over there. Otter Adventures has, uh, started November seventh. We'll run Tuesdays and Thursdays after school and it'll probably be twenty-six kids involved. The second session for the school year will begin in January. The LLC's attendance is seventy-six percent, um, and they continue to work on students in the, on the county to ensure consistent attendance. IQ had their Fall Social at the Comal Zoo on November tenth. Ryan says it was really cold, but, uh, fifty families showed up, so it was really nice to see them. Uh, enrollment continues to come in and we are continuing onboarding students weekly. Any, any high school students that enroll, uh, November twenty-ninth will have to wait to get enrolled attendance-wise until, uh, semester two. So, um, not adding any more kids for the last four or five weeks of the semester. Uh, and midterm quarter two is Friday, December eighth, and those grades will be made, be mailed out to, uh, families so they're aware where they're at during, um, mid-quarter for quarter two questions.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? All right.
Thank you.
And then our last report will be from Superintendent Drake.
Good evening. A few thank yous to start out with. Uh, first of all, I hope, uh, many people in the room tonight had a chance to see Joseph. Uh, it was really a fabulous production. A lot of work went into it and, uh, a lot of singing parts in that production and, uh, I just thought it was fantastic. Really enjoyed it. So appreciate all the work from the casting crew, uh, that went into putting that production on. Um, batting cleanup, uh, often some of the things that I cover have been covered previously, so my apologies. Uh, but I do have some visual aids at least. Um, so this is a photo of, uh, the high school student council and the, um, food drive for the food shelf that Principal Anderson referenced. And so appreciation, uh, for all the work that went into that. And then, uh, this is a photo of, um, Ms. Heichek's, uh, seventh graders, uh, that are down in Roosevelt uh, with their feeding backpack, um, uh, work that they were doing to, uh, benefit our community. And there's a photo of all the bags that are filled with food that would go over, out to those families over the weekend. And, uh, just want to emphasize, uh, that both of these activities, uh, really fall into our strategic plan with contributing citizen and how our students are part of our community and have the ability and they're doing it, going out and making a positive difference. So I'm really proud of the work that's going on there. Uh, new elementary school, uh, so the community had an opportunity to, uh, fill out a survey. Uh, that survey window is now closed, uh, but we have not received the final analysis on the results yet. Approximately fourteen hundred, uh, folks from the community completed the survey. Um, we will have some, um, I have a discussion with, um, school perceptions, uh, later this week. And then, uh, they will be presenting at the next board meeting on the results of the survey. Uh, some congratulatory notes, um, a huge congratulations to our Curry Science, uh, classroom. Uh, they received the Innovation Award, one of two schools in the state of Minnesota from the Minnesota Rural Education Association here a couple of weeks ago, uh, at Cragan's Resort. And here are some photos, uh, from that evening. And that's Commissioner Jett and, uh, Bob Indahar, who is the executive director on the right-hand side of MREA. And we were, uh, really fortunate, uh, that Kevin Wallivan from WDAY, uh, spent a Friday morning, uh, onsite at the prairie. And, uh, WDAY did a really, really nice, uh, feature story on that program. So, uh, congratulations, uh, proud of the work that's, uh, being done there on a daily basis and really a very nice feather in the cap of the district, so. Estee Versteg, uh, qualified for state in two events in swimming, so congratulations to her. Um, she didn't make the finals, but she's only a sophomore with a very bright swimming future ahead. So again, congratulations on that. Uh, we had, uh, the activities department, um, did a, um, uh, signing, uh, for athletic participation at college at the next level. So congratulations to Sarah, Riley, Ella, Ryland, and Hayden, uh, for their athletic accomplishments. And, uh, that's a really nice thing that's been started here a couple of years ago, uh, to recognize those student athletes. Um, uh, not only the careers that they've had or currently are having as otters, uh, but their plans that go beyond that. And our cross-country, our boys cross-country team, uh, competed at state, uh, did a really nice job down there. Uh, Jaden Miller was our top male finisher. Um, and then, uh, Cassie Wellman, uh, finished nineteenth as a solo state qualifier, uh, at the state meet. So congratulations, uh, to the boys team and to Cassie. Then upcoming events, uh, these have all been, uh, mentioned earlier, but the end of the first trimester's coming up already. Uh, at the end of this week, it's gone fast. Uh, with student learning, uh, Principal Cole Beck mentioned this earlier, but a couple of photos from the, uh, celebration of the fiftieth day of school for kindergarten. And, um, looks like a lot of fun was had and a lot of enthusiasm. Uh, so with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move into our general consent items. We have our minutes from our November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three board meeting. And then our bills report, um... November 9th to the 21st.
Yep, so November 9th, November 21st, Steve and I came in early today and met with Renee and it was kind of a light two-week period. It was just over $700,000 in bills, most of which was a general fund, but a lot of it was routine things as far as teacher retirement and different things like that and food service. Some of the outstanding things that are little one-of-a-kind things, we did have $14,000 that went through to Bonjour travel for the trip to France next year. And that's a pass-through, of course, because most of that is paid for with fundraising. So lots and lots and lots of small, small amounts, $24,000 to Balance Gymnastics Center. Of course, now we've got a new contract that we approved last month with them for their new facility in the old Ben Franklin Building. Ida Bailey, we had $7,500 of the $35,000 that they charged us to tell us that everything is working okay in our financial systems. Sorry about that. And $47,000 to Zerberg for Lincoln Phase Two, which is progressing nicely. So that's all I had for the, for the bills. Again, not that much, we do it every two weeks, it helps to get through them, but 99% of those was pretty routine, so unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Kirby?
Thank you.
And then we'll move to Christian.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items tonight for your board approvals. Certified teaching staff hire Jennifer Smith, special education teacher at IQ. She is gracious enough to kind of come back and forth with us as our influx of students and so it's a .2422 for the rest of the year and kind of go from there. And I believe though the date is should be 11/22 here on the effective date. I think there's an error on that piece. Certified teaching staff resignation Jessica Mulstry, Title I Program Director effective 12/22/2023. Just, just a note on the side, she will continue teaching as a Title I teacher, it's just that she, her request is to resign from, from the director position. And then support staff hires, we have a couple of support staff, Jennifer Endries, special education paraprofessional, who will begin in Cleveland next Monday along with Mason Jensen, who's done, been doing a long-term setting position in the same role as early childhood classroom assistant over at Lincoln, and that's starting next Monday up, so I would request board approval for these items.
Could I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying nay. The consent items are approved. We do not have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 544, State of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Number two, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined, each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. Combined polling place number one is the Fergus Falls Public Library Community Room, 205 Hampton Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Combined polling place number two is the YMCA Community Room at 1164 Thrive Road Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Combined polling place number three, Minnesota State Community and Technical College at 1414 College Way in Fergus Falls, Minnesota. And combined polling place number four is Bigwood Events Center at 925 Western Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.09, the polling places will remain open for voting for the school district elections not held on the same day as a statewide election between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The clerk is directed to file a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditors of each of the counties in which the school district is located in whole or in part from 30 days after its adoption. As required by Minnesota Statute, Minnesota Statute Section 204b.16 subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district whose school district polling place location has been changed. The notice must be a non-forwardal notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. A notice that is returned as undeliverable must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor who shall change the registrant's status to challenged in the statewide registration system. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer a resolution and move for its adoption.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Missy, will you take role, please?
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Ms. Hermes.
Yes.
Steven Jagusa.
Yes.
The resolution was adopted.
Okay, we have another resolution. We have a resolution to make permanent fund transfer from the general fund to the community service fund in the amount of $250,000. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123b.79 allows an independent school district to make a permanent fund transfer from the general fund to any other operating fund according to Section 121a.19, or if the resources of the other fund are not adequate to finance approved expenditures from that other fund. And whereas operating funds, as defined in the Universal Financial Accounting and Reporting Standards, include the general fund, food service fund, and the community service fund. And whereas the community service fund currently has a deficit balance and does not have adequate resources to finance the approved expenditures, now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to authorize the finance director to make a permanent fund transfer from the general fund to the community service fund in the amount of $250,000. Could someone offer that resolution and move for adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Could I get a second, please?
I'll second.
And Ms. Hermes, will you take role?
Yes. Steven Biggins.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Ms. Hermes. Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Then could I get a motion to approve the MDE review and comment for proposed new elementary school?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying nay. That is approved. So that concludes our meeting tonight. Our next meeting schedule, our regular school board meeting, is Monday, December 11th, 5:15 here in the Otter Community Room. We only have one meeting in December. And then we have a public meeting that same night for the World's Best Workforce, that's during our school board meeting. And then also during our school board meeting is a public meeting on our technology plan and internet safety policy. And also, that same night at 6:00 p.m., we have our Fergus Falls Public Schools Taxes Payable 2024, formally the truth in taxation. So could I get a motion to adjourn tonight?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying nay. Our meeting is adjourned.